Good evening. We're calling to order the Bothell Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 28, 2015. We'll start with any non-agenda public comments. If anyone in the public that wants to comment on something that's not on the agenda today. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes for October 15, 2014. Secretary?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October 15, 2014 as written.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Let the record show that it passes unanimously to approve the minutes. Is there any new business? All right, seeing none. Public hearing, and can you remind me procedurally again, how, do we need a motion to open the public hearing again, or do we just jump straight into the presentation?
You simply need to reopen the 2015 public hearing for the 2015 periodic planning code update.
Do we need a motion to do that, or?
No, you don't. You can just open it.
Okay, thank you. So we are opening and continuing the public hearing on the 2015 periodic plan and code update.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yeah, and so how, it looks like you have a presentation to give, and then we'll have discussion, take audience, and also go through the code section here.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Sherman Gong, City Transportation Planner, and here tonight to go over some of the revisions and changes that we've had to the transportation element of the city's comprehensive plan. This will be our, actually our fourth presentation in terms of transportation element. However, this will be the first time we actually go through all of the sections in one shot to get it, so that it was just a little cumbersome going by parts previously. So we're gonna just start at the beginning and go through this document. So our initial review of the purpose relationship to GMA, the background, information, parts of the element at the beginning was initially reviewed May 21 last year, but this, we're just going to kind of go through, go skip over that since there's not a very lot of, not a lot of key changes. We just want to go through some of the key updates of the element in general. So primarily, the Puget Sound regional plans and policies on page TR3 basically includes, includes some of the key updates that reflect Vision 2040 regional plans and Transportation 2040, which is the transportation element of that plan, regional plan. And we're just, I'm just gonna go through my presentation, and we can come back through page by different pages if you'd like as we go along. With me is our consultant, traffic consultant here is Don Samdahl with Farr and Pierce, and also Steve Morikawa with the capital, our capital project manager for the city. So on page TR4, one of the primary updates here, key updates, was to update the plan to meet PSRC Puget Sound Regional Council goals, and it included language to meet the state of good repair goal, which is an infrastructure preservation focused goal, active transportation plan, which is the multiple transportation modes for pedestrian, bicycles, non-motorized travel, and a section that discusses the PSRC study for growing transit communities, which we included with the coordinating land use, which is really a, to provide for mixed use and promote mixed-use development, connections to high-capacity transit, and will address the energy efficient and climate, natural environment goals for air and water quality that must also be addressed, although those are also addressed in the other sections of the comp plan. The supporting multimodal mobility is also one of the goals of the PSRC study there, reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, and by working with the transit agencies to increase ridership and to get away from single occupancy vehicles, one of the big things will be to adopt a level of service measures for non-motorized travel and to promote transportation demand management, which we have, already have a section in the element for. And then finally, the connecting people to transit goal, which is just to encourage accessibility for all users, age groups, and connections in those regional, regional growth centers. The next key updates are in the transit agency plans. We discussed a little bit about that on page TR8, not TR, it's TR5 and 6. I mean, the state, I'm sorry, did I go, I think I went, yeah, here we go, sorry, back one. Page, TR5 and 6, and updates to the state facilities, which include the I-405 northbound lane addition, 522 crossroads realignment, which are all completed, the 522 Stage 1 Wayne Curve portion, which is complete, and Stage 2A. The city's also completed the SR524 widening, which was from 527 to the West City limits, and updates that refer to the declassification of SR527 from the state to be a city arterial, and that's kind of found throughout, that's kind of prominent throughout the document because we don't refer to SR527 anymore. We have to change it to Bothell Way, which goes from SR522 up to the county line, which is just south of 240th, and then it becomes Bothell Everett Highway from there up to 228th Street. So when we're talking about certain sections of SR527, we had to change it to that, that reference. Okay, all right. Updates to transit agency plans on page TR8. The key, the key update here is the city of Bothell's proposed, proposal for Sound Transit III projects, which is coming up, is in the planning stage right now. It is a very important funding opportunity for Bothell, and we want to include these specific projects in our element, which are the SR, continuing SR522 high-capacity transit construction and planning. The northeast 185th Street, 98th Avenue transit corridor, which is designated through, from SR522 up by the library and then through downtown to the east. And along that same corridor, the addition of a transit center and park-and-ride facility is also a very key and important part of our transit plan, plans. And then finally, we discuss later in the, in the transit section of the element, the community transit plans to add a SWIFT II service along SR527 from Mill Creek, basically. It's further than that, but in terms of the impact to the city is to provide the, that service up to Canyon Park, just the north side of, just to the north side of 405 on And those are the, so those are the key transit agency plans and updates. The next section, which is the section we had not ever talked, that we, that we kind of ended at last year, is the local transportation setting updates. This is the, this is the largest section of the element, and really contained the, the analysis of the traffic model results and level of service conditions for existing and future conditions. Our analysis of the seven concurrency corridors in the city currently operate at level of service D or better. The table is referred to in Table TR4, page TR18 there. And there are some, there are some intersections, however, that work, that operate at worse than that. There are some that are operating at level of service F, and part of, part of the improvements that we will suggest are to help some of those out, although some of them really are going to require additional study to, to get out of that level of service condition for the individual intersections. However, by 2035, which is our future, our future year analysis target, is all seven of those corridors, from a corridor level of service standpoint, rather than a specific intersection standpoint, will operate at level of service E or better with specific intersection improvements along those, along any of those corridors. And those improvement, those, those, that summary is on Table TR7. And then the, the improvements that we are considered, were considered for the modeling and featuring conditions is listed in the transportation element to achieve acceptable level of service E conditions. Those are current projects, which would be constructed as development occurs along with traffic growth and will, will help to, you know, continue traffic flow and let that operate, let that operate through, through acceptable level services, I guess. And again, those, that list of projects is in Table TR8 on page TR29. The, the projects in that table, these I've picked were kind of the key ones that we are focusing on for future development. First one of note, because of the high congestion concerns we have in the, in the northerly part of SR527, will cause for a third northbound three lane between 211th Street, which is about where the Fred Meyer South, just that signal, the South signal at Fred Meyer, that would need to continue up just through the SR524 intersection. And that's identified as project number 16 in the, in the list on Table TR8, and also in figure TR5. The second project we want to make note of is the Bothell Everett Highway and 228th Street intersection safety improvements. That's a very congested intersection, very busy, but we are including a second eastbound and a second northbound left turn lane, the northbound left turn, the second northbound left turn lane is system operating. So we are in the, in the process of, of finalizing our design and getting construction obligation money, funds for constructing the second eastbound lane. And that's project number 23 in your, in your table. The third project resulting from the abandoning of the 39th Connector project is some significant improvements to 35th, the 35th, 39th corridor, including widening 35th between 240th and 228th to three lanes, is currently just two, adding some new signals at 240th Street and, and at 240th Street with 35th and 39th, and those three projects are also on the list. The, the, the last, the, the northerly section of that corridor also includes 228th Street between 35th and 39th, and that's in the last project here we've called out, which is, which includes widening that section of 228th to four to five lanes, and also including a new traffic signal at 29th, which is the South access driveway to the Canyon Park Business Park, and we are in the process of beginning design work for that this year. Next thing we want to bring to your attention in the updates is the addition of level of service measures for transit, bicycles, and pedestrian facilities. We sort of tried to introduce this last year in our, and we just want to, we placed it in the correct location of the, of the element now. It's in the, in the sec, in the transit section, and the transit level of service measures, page, on page TR37, Table TR9 discusses the, the measures that we want to use to just, inventory, basically what we have. The same for bicycle, bicycle facilities in the city. We've also established some level of service measures for that, as well as pedestrian facilities. And those specific measures are shown in those tables there. These are specific, these, all three of these transit bicycle and pedestrian measures level of service, again, were, as I just mentioned earlier, to meet the PSRC active transportation plan goals. And it is our intent to, to look, take, to take each of these sections and further develop them this year in more focused, more focused analysis and, and inventories to come up with specific, more specific plans that are more detailed to address any other, to just more detailed connectivities that we didn't really have time to, to jump into too much this time around for this update. We want to talk about the transportation financing for the concurrency projects that we talked about previously. We are, we're showing updated project costs that is needed for the 20-year transportation needs. This is, we're updating, you know, construction costs and every, design, everything with basically the table that we had previously, and we, the expected expenditures for the 2015 to 2020 near term is 120, about 120 million. The long-range, the long-range projects total 340, 341 million for a total of about 470 million in total project costs. And the funding coming from local, local funds mitigation, development mitigation, grants, and other agency participation. We have, I have shown here is the identified funds, which includes everything from the grants and mitigate, from the things we just talked about above there, with 82 million identified for the near term, 243 million identified for funding in the future projects for a total of 326 million approximately. And the additional funds, this is the, this is where we have to, we're going to have to find additional funding from, from whether it's taxes, or new fees, or transportation benefit districts, something other than our mitigation grants and general fund. So this is going to be the additional monies that we are going to be seeking, and that, that additional money for the near term is 37 million between 2015, 2020 projects, improvements, 106 million for the future, and that's a total of about 144 million. Next thing I want to go over is the, some of the key changes that we had to our goals, policies, and actions. A lot of the edits you saw in there are either, you know, just some cleanup terminology and whatnot, but the primary ones here are page TR49, which is our goals, and what we did there was just rewrite them to consolidate some of the goals to just, to make them more clear and, and include some other elements that we need, needed to focus on with, with our regional goals. We incorporated some policies and actions to support those regional goals in the Transportation 2040 Plan, for example, and the first one we want to point out is the regional, in the regional coordination action, TRA10, which basically discusses our efforts to work with, work with other agencies and, and continue to encourage that preservation of those infrastructures in the state of good repair. Public transit policy, TRP27, is a discussion about the level of service measures that we are adopting for the transit, transit level of service conditions. And, and basically the same for the bicycle facilities and pedestrian policy changes as I listed here. Again, those are to address the active transportation plan goals of the regional policy. And in general, the other policy and action revisions or deletions were, were basically because of these four reasons that I listed here. One, they've either been completed by the city and we didn't need, no, we didn't need them to be identified as a, as a action or a policy anymore. We had already, for example, development of a traffic calming program, which we have done, and we're continuing to, will continue to, you know, use, utilize as long as there's funding that is identified for it. So we kind of, we removed that goal, for example. They have just resolved over time where, where they just weren't an issue anymore and, or they were not feasible or warranted for, to implement, such as comes to mind is monitoring traffic on, truck traffic on residential streets. You know, we're not going to continue to, to do that. It's just not necessary. We don't have the demand or the issues related to that. And then finally, the growth in, the growth of the college, the UW-Bothell and Cascade College campus and inclusion of them as a, as a major, as a major center and in the The three additions that, three policy additions that we, we went, we identified here, did not get into the edited version, is, is to address natural environment and climate change and safety goals. I'm going to pass this out to you here. And we're basically just adding that to, we're going to be adding that to the element to, again, focus on, you know, improving the, the, improving the natural environment sustainability, those, those, those goals, and it also addresses one of the targets, which is to, to have a goal that, that says you will address emergency conditions and, and have a focus on taking care of that. I think it's, it's as part of our, as, as part of our comprehensive emergency management And then also, we, the addition of, of some transportation actions include these, these two, include these two additions, which also focuses on those, those regional goals for the environment and emergency services. We basically just, as we were looking at compliance with this plan, with the regional goals and state goals, that these got, these were identified and, and developed to, to, again, meet compliance with those goals. The, another correction, and again, we're, these were, these were just, these were, you know, developed and worked on as we, you know, after we sent you the packet, so just pointing these out. These two revisions regarding the state of good repair, we reviewed that goal and, and looked at what our cycles were in terms of maintenance, and for the policies on page TR51, we want to just show that it's, we're changing the cycle from 20 years to 25 years. And for the actions, the same thing, changing 20 to 25 years, and you can just make a note of that in your, in your, in your packet. So, and then, don't have a slide for this, but also wanted to, something I just found out, as I was reviewing some of my stuff, the, my, my graphics, I found an error in figure TR, TR3A and 3B, which are the level of service summaries for the corridors, and I just wanted to point out that, I can go find that, we can, I can show that to you if you want me to pull the figure up. But the SR522 corridor on the existing conditions, figure TR3A is, is currently shown in your packet as level of service D, and it should be level of service C. And then the following graphic. And then the following graphic, TR three B, which is the future level of service condition case in the same, for the same corridor, the SR five twenty-two corridor, is shown as level of service E in your packet and should be level of service D. And that will update your, then you, you'll, then you'll have the correct information there. So at this time, we will entertain a public testimony or accept any public testimony, deliberate, and, uh, answer any questions you have, provide direction to staff, and that's our continuation of our, be our continuation of this hearing. So if you have any questions, I mean, we, we can go, I can bring up the, the plan. If you have any specific, uh, questions, I can go bring the plan up and we can go through specific pages, or if you have any just general questions, I can ask, try to answer those for you, or have, uh, our consultant or Steve answer those for you if the.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Um, I think we'll first start with public testimony. I see a few folks. Is anyone from the public that would like to come and speak about this topic on the agenda? Please just come to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is John Langston. First, I'd like to just introduce kind of who I am and how I fit into this. My family and I own and operate Kids Country Childcare Centers. Uh, we are located up on two hundred and twenty-eighth. Uh, the address is eight two zero, two hundred and twenty-eighth street, uh, just west of the new intersection, Ninth Avenue, uh, Ninth, Ninth Avenue Southeast and two twenty-eighth. Uh, we've been doing business in the city of Bothell for about twenty-five years now. All the while, right there in Canyon Park, uh, we operated, uh, our previous childcare facility in the Albertson's Shopping Center, and, uh, just recently moved and developed the, the piece of property that's up on two hundred and twenty-eighth street. We also own, um, our development company that does the developments for this, uh, this particular location that we developed in two thousand and, uh, it was finished in two thousand and ten. And we have, uh, twelve other facilities. Uh, we're involved in the development of nearly all of them. Two thousand and seven, we began the process of constructing this eleven thousand square of, uh, facility, um, to replace the existing lease. During the, during the course of our own construction, um, we were forced, asked, told to make several improvements to two twenty-eighth, uh, on that corridor, including widening, uh, re-channeling the roadway to increase traffic flow. We installed bike lanes, sidewalks, accessible crosswalks at the intersection of Ninth Avenue, Southeast and two twenty-eighth. Uh, we had to do a complete overhaul of the intersection, which included, uh, additional signal masts, signal heads. Uh, we replaced all the older signal heads. Uh, we moved and updated the entire signal control module. It used to be on the north-west corner. We were required to move it to the southeast corner, so we had to literally chant, you know, dig under the road, re-channel the, the entire control module, uh, kitty corner to where it was. Uh, we had to put new pedestrian signals, new curb and gutter on all four corners. Um, we incurred expenses of about four hundred thousand dollars to, uh, to bring that small corridor, which is between, you know, the, the west end of our property stretches to Seventh Avenue Southeast. The, the east end of the property comes down to that intersection, um, and just a little beyond you. The, the, the city owns a, a small piece of, of wetland just to the east of our property there. Um, so that small section, you know, including all that, we incurred a, uh, fees, direct costs, not fees. We incurred costs of a, about a little over four hundred thousand dollars. That is in addition to the traffic mitigation and the traffic impact fees that we were charged and are now on a, on the same development. We have a proposed thirty-five thousand square foot office building. Um, our current impact fees for that building are seven hundred and forty-seven thousand That doesn't include the permit fees. That doesn't include, that actually kind of comical, that doesn't include a three percent administration fee on top of the seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So in order for us to pull a permit that has been, uh, it's been about two years, it's approved, it's sitting, uh, in the Community Development Center. It's been there for about two years, approved. Um, it would require us to go in with about a nine hundred thousand dollar check just to begin the process. Once we begin that process, we have an approved re-channelization of two hundred and twenty-eighth street between the mid-block intersection between Ninth and Seventh. West, so we've got a mid-block intersection that's a right in, right out, it's got a C curve that we were, um, asked to put in, we did. So there's more channelization between that mid-block intersection and up there, as well as the Seventh Street improvements. Those improvements are about two hundred thousand dollars. My point is, this is excessive. This is cost prohibitive. We can't even pull, we can't do this development. We can't pull the permit. We're dead in the water before we are even able to come to the table with a development that was zoned. We came to the city, we knew when we bought the piece of property, what the zoning was. We came to the city and said, hey, what's the best use for this thing? City came back and, you know, we, we did some research and they did some research and we all came together and said, hey, you know, what would be great up there is a, is an office building, some of it medical, some of it professional, that's what it's zoned for, let's, you know, let's go with that. We go through architectural, civil, structural, you know, that whole thing. At the end of the day, the economy slugs, which the entire city recognizes, city, I don't know whether it was this commission or city council, came back and said, okay, we recognize that there's a lot of struggling developers out there with these projects. We're going to extend your permit, which is where we're under right now. I, I think we had a six-year extension or something of that nature, which was outstanding. All the while, in the past six years, traffic impact fees have increased ninety-two percent in those six years. And that's during a time when, when officials here recognized and took action to promote I have some, you know, some general questions. First and foremost is why, why during that permit extension did the fees just continue to, to increase? You know, at one point, when the economy was, was sluggish, the city came together and recognized that there's some, there's some folks that just aren't going to be able to develop these properties. And so, and so we, we were allowed to have these extensions on these permits. And then, you know, six years later, we come back, or five years later now, we've come back and we just continue to see these traffic mitigation fees, these impact fees continue to climb and climb and climb. Finally, um, two questions, comments. Doesn't it make sense for the fees that are directly paid by private developers that go into these corridor infrastructures, whether it's safety or, or flow? Doesn't it make sense that those ought to come back to us in the form of a credit towards our traffic mitigation? You know, I, I would like to see that. You know, and secondly, where, how are these monies being distributed? Is this, I'm in a level, you know, according to, according to what I just looked at, I'm surrounded by two F's. And how can I be in, you know, assured that any of these monies that I'm paying improve that level of service? So with that, thank you for your time.
Well, Ben, thank you for your testimony.
I have a question if you may. Uh, John, you indicated that you have twelve other, uh, buildings that you guys have developed or constructed. I, I am not a, I'm not a developer, so I don't know if a million one is, is reasonable or unreasonable as far as, uh, traffic mitigation fees, et cetera. It, it, it sounds excessive to me, but what's your experience?
Billion reasonable. You know, of the, of our twelve locations, you know, I can give you very specific examples. Um, the city of Issaquah, for example, we built that center, hold on, probably near the year two thousand. Um, they, they, as well as many other King County municipalities, use the, the I T E trip, uh, trip generation manual, and they recognize what they call pass by trips. Uh, so for example, uh, childcare is a very localized business. You don't go out of your way. If you have a child and you live in Canyon Park, you're not going to take your child to Woodinville. And, and the, the international, or the, what does I T E stand for? The?
Institute.
Institute of Transportation Engineers. Uh, they recognize that you're not going great distances to take your child to, you know, a certain, you know, childcare. So they give you pass by credits. I don't see anywhere in the city of Bothell, and, and we certainly didn't get, um, any pass by credits, uh, where they recognize that the, the flow's already going down two twenty-eighth. If you live above two twenty-eighth, above our childcare center, and you're bringing your child to childcare at our center, you're going to work. You're not going out of your way. It's not a new trip. That's a mechanism that a lot of cities, uh, recognize. I know the city of Issaquah is one of them that, that, you know, in, in the past, we've, we've gone through and, and their fee was about twenty-five thousand dollars for traffic impact. You know, certainly not the hundreds of thousands of dollars here. Um, the city of Burien, um, we, that was quite a while ago, that was in the, in the nineties. Um, we did some street improvements, and that was our traffic mitigation. Uh, so, you know, certainly as, as the years have gone by, municipalities have gotten more aggressive, but this, you know, in my opinion, this is, this is outrageous. You know, this is cost prohibitive. This has gotten to the point to where it is, you know, and this is just one case example. This is our family and we're not huge, you know, developers. We were, I was raised here. I went to Woodinville High School, so I've lived here all my life. And I can tell you that this is absolutely cost prohibitive for someone that doesn't come from extremely deep pockets to come in and do a development in the city of Bothell.
Can you give me a range as to what fees have been, you know, taken out the?
The most expensive fees that I can recall that we've ever paid were about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, and that was, uh, that was about eight years ago, I believe. And that, and that at the time, we, we thought, holy smokes, you know, this is, this is something else. You know, and it was in a newer, it was in Maple Valley, um, and they were, they were struggling to improve the Kent-Kangley corridor and the Black Diamond, the Maple Valley Black Diamond Road. Now it's, you know, full of development, and they were a little behind the eight ball. But that was certainly, you know, the most often, um, we don't pay, a, a lot of times we never paid traffic mitigation. Um, it, you know, certainly depends on the, on the municipality and depends on where you were. If you're in unincorporated King County, it's a different, totally different animal than if you're, you know, in the, in the city of Bothell.
Pardon me, so you, you did ask a few questions, and I just wanted to take a chance to, to answer some of the questions that you asked. And definitely, again, thank you for coming and, and bringing this. It, it's, it's unfortunate that it's, and these are high numbers. I mean, this is, does not sound like a good thing. One thing I did want to clarify is that I, you, you'd asked something about where the fees and, this, this is the planning commission, so we do mostly zoning, so we don't administer the fees, uh, we don't administer or run the permits. Uh, so several of the questions that you asked, I, I don't think that this, this commission can really give you a satisfactory answer.
Does it just go back into, into the city's general fund?
You know, I, I, I don't know if, if you can answer that, Gary, or somebody else. Similar for the, for the fee distribution. Um, so I, I, I want you to be able to get the answers. These are very good questions, but I just want to be totally transparent that, that this commission probably doesn't have the answers to the financial structure, the fee program, the permitting fines, uh, things like that. But I, I think some of the staff in the room may, may be able to answer your questions.
Yeah. So unfortunately, you probably have the wrong staff here. We're more the, the planner, the long-range planning and the, the building guys. Um, you're talking more about concurrency and the permit review side, um, so we would need to bring in like Wassim and our, um, city engineer. But typically what happens, and actually, they just talked about this in December, concurrency about the rate for, um, per trip essentially for the city. And, um, I think Don Feen, he's a utility manager who also runs the development review. Um, basically, they have a whole presentation, and I think it's online, and it might be of interest for you to look at that. And you can take my card and give me a call, and we can put you in touch with the right people to talk to. If nothing else, to understand the process and where it goes, one of the things they did was they had a range of cities and agencies nearby, and they tried to show a range of what it would cost, um, for concurrency for us versus if we raised the fees where they wanted to, in order for us to be able to build infrastructure relative to other cities around us. So it showed where we stood relative to other cities. We weren't the highest, we weren't the lowest, we're somewhere in between. As far as frontage improvements and things, that's usually a case-by-case basis, and that's why I would suggest you talk to, um, not only Wassim, but maybe the city engineer. If nothing else, to get your feedback as well. But for concurrency purposes, there are a list of projects that, um, that money goes to, and those are capacity projects, and those, that money has to be spent on those projects within that list. Now, that doesn't guarantee that any one year, it's going to be right in front of your development. It could be another project on the list that's, you know, a few miles away or something like that. But there is a process to identify that funds and where it goes to. It's not an easy process. Money comes in different forms and fashions. You may develop one year, and the guy across the street from you may develop seven years from now. And somehow, we got to pull that project together and that fund and put it together to, to create an improvement. One of the ways it's used as an example, I think Sherman talked about, was at the intersection in two twenty-eighth and Bothell, but highway, that's our worst intersection. Um, we have a project coming on board that's going to put a second left turn lane north. Now, doesn't sound exciting, but it will bring a little bit of relief. Um, it is costly. It's cost us two million dollars? Three million dollars? Three million dollars, a lot of which we got federal grant money, some of which is money that concurrency money would pay for our share, because the federal government requires us to participate. We can't just get a hundred percent of federal money. So some of that money that you gave or somebody else gave goes toward our portion that we can get funds like that.
So, so one, one thing I do want to make sure of, so you, you, you've asked a bunch of very legitimate questions, and, and it's unfortunate that I think the people here aren't the right people to answer the questions, but I want to make sure that, that, that we get you the contact info for the people who can. Uh, so you had, you had called out a few, uh, some of these people by position, the city engineer, but can, can you make sure that, uh, Mr. Langston gets specific contact information and hours that they're available and be sure to be able to meet them?
What I'm offering, John, is you can contact me and I can facilitate that for him, so that's fine.
Did you have any other questions or comments that you wanted to make?
Appreciate your time.
Okay, well, that, thank you. Okay, so. Okay, so, thank you again, Sherman, for, for the slides and the presentation. Any other public testimony? I guess everyone else's staff and... Okay, so I, are there any general comments from the commission? We can start with that, and then I thought we could just go through page by page, just sort of the way that we always do.
Just a quick one.
Blake.
Sherman, thank you very much for the presentation. Do, we do appreciate it. It was, it was, it was well organized. So thank you for that. After reading through the 87 pages and, and all the changes that are there, et cetera, the three, the question I have is what are the top three issues that we're facing from a transportation standpoint, and how are we going to deal with it? And how are we going to pay for it? I mean, I want to make sure that, you know, if there's a fire, if there's a, if there's a, you know, emergency vehicle need, we can, we can get that addressed. The other, the other issue is I didn't see any specifics, and I could have overlooked it, but I did not see any specifics in reference to 100th Avenue Northeast and the traffic issues that we have there. And that kind of ties in a great deal with, with the Wayne Golf Course redevelopment that, that, you know, they're looking at as well. I do know that 100th Avenue Northeast is a, is just a, it's, it's gridlock. It's gridlock. So I want to find out what, you know, from your perspective, going through the 87 pages or 83 pages, what are the top three? What are we doing about it, and how are we going to pay for it?
Well, I think the top three issues for, for us is, is the, is to manage the congestion for the 527 corridor, to improve the 35th, 39th corridor. And I, I think those are like really the top two. The third one is, is really just addressing, addressing and focusing on, on, on the non-motorized element. And, you know, that is the direction that, that the region is going, and having a better, better connectivity from a, from an environmental sustainability standpoint, to have better facilities that way. And, and that's something that we definitely want to address in this coming year. But as far as the other two projects, even the intersection of 527 and 228th, for example, there's, there's not, there's not a really specific improvement project that, that we could find out, that we could find that, that, that would alleviate that level of service, unless we're looking, we have to look at something of a much bigger realm to, to figure out what that is. And we'll, we'll have to identify funding to study that intersection, for example. To me, that's a, one of our, our highest challenges. And then, and then definitely the, the northerly part of SR 527, and, you know, ultimately what we do there. Although there is a project that would, you know, by widening and adding a northbound through lane, that would, that would take care of that. How do we pay for that? I mean, that's a funding question that I think Steve maybe could answer, as well as the discussion of the 35th, 39th corridor, which he's been very heavily involved with.
Okay, if I can, just for one second. So last week, and for the last couple of months, we've been, we've been talking about the country village subarea plan, and, and rezoning that to include residential, which I look at and I go, okay, we're, that means we're putting more cars on Bothell Everett Highway. And what I'm hearing you say is that that is one of the largest, if not the largest issue that we have from a transportation standpoint, but we don't have a plan to address that.
Well...
Go ahead.
So I'll address that one. Let me add to Sherman's a little bit on the opinion part. The council is going to meet this Saturday and have a council retreat. And a couple of the topics on there are how to fund some of the key, big transportation projects. And the other one is maintenance. Maintenance can be anything from maintaining streets, like clearing storm drains, resurfacing, repaving, fixing potholes, anything like that. So I think from a department point of view, you're probably going to hear things, essentially you said it, funding. How do we fund those big projects? Whatever those big projects are for, whether they're for the north end, whether they're to finish the downtown area. And the downtown plan was to kind of stimulate economic sustainability in downtown, which would drive the rest of the city. And maintenance is really coming up. And one of the points that Sherman brought up was the PSRC is really leaning on state of good repair. And you're seeing a reflection on that in the grant programs. They're putting more money into pavement repair, whereas before, they would put money into street projects, which is a little bit of difference, you know, new streets, widening streets. Now they're putting more money in basically street overlays. So everybody's recognizing that from an infrastructure point of view, we have to spend more, more money there, because if we don't take care of it, we're going to spend more money later. So I just kind of want to add to, not only the project sense, but the maintenance side is, is a big issue as well. As far as the 527 Bothell Everett Highway corridor, I think we looked at it, and there's no, there's no silver bullet, okay? That corridor is a difficult corridor because, especially 228th and north, because of the business parks, because I-4 or I-5 is right there. So a lot of people are getting on and off during the rush hour. And a couple of things that would help is one, which we identified, which would keep us above the level of service criteria that we need to meet in the short term, is trying to put a third lane northbound on 527 through the 524 intersection. So that kind of cleans things up a little bit, okay? We probably want to put a southbound lane eventually, I think, between 524 and I-4 or I-5. That allows cars to get onto I-4 or I-5 without backing up and getting into the two lanes. The 228 Bothell Everett Highway intersection is a very difficult intersection. When we do this next improvement, which is adding the next left turn lane, we're pretty much maxed out in two dimensions, if you can think about that. You don't see too many intersections with three-way left turn lanes, and adding another lane through is not necessarily going to help us either. So the next step gets quite expensive, because it's probably something like a grade separation, which is pretty pricey. And from the staff point of view, what we need to do is start looking at that and figuring out how that could be done, and what kind of funds that could be. I think what we're telling you is we've come up with a method to meet the goals and the requirements of the city for the next six years. But that doesn't mean that in the next six years, we wouldn't like to ask council and perhaps support to study that intersection, to see what the next step for that would be.
Thank you.
And then to answer your, your other question, Blake, about 100th, the 100th corridor? That corridor is, there's a, it's not studied as a collector, as, as a collector arterial, first of all. And there are no signalized intersections in between the two endpoints of basically SR 522 or 145th. So there's capacity on that road for, for, for through traffic and through input, that, you know, traffic flow. Granted, in peak hours, at those two intersections, we do, we do see some congestion. But from the level of service... Where's my level?
I don't know what the level of service is necessarily. I just, I just know that there was about 100 people in this room discussing that, that very corridor.
Yeah. And the level of service at those intersections are, are, you know, well below the level of service F conditions that we have at 527, 228, for example. The, you know, some of the issues I've heard are related to specifically, you know, accessibility from a side streets. And those, those types of conditions or concerns are addressed through our development and review process, and which they evaluate, which they'll evaluate capacity and traffic, you know, delay and safety mainly, when you have busy intersections like that, and any queuing that, that occurs, and, you know, accessibility to their, to that street. So, you know, that'll be looked at, that'll be looked at through the development review process. And as far as, you know, reviewing 100th in this, in this, in the transportation element, there's really, it operates, there's, there's capacity on the, as far as the corridor goes. And there's, we didn't really see a, a need to include that as a corridor at this time.
Eric? Oh, go ahead.
Evening, commissioners. Since we're talking about the 100th Wayneeta corridor, I thought I'd just add something. I, I think most of you are aware that, that there is a lot of attention right now around a specific property request that we've received on the Wayne Golf Course to do some plan amendments for an area there that is not within the conservation easement. I think everyone's aware of that right now. There's a lot of, a lot of interest being generated by that. I think you're also aware that the next Wednesday on February 4th, staff is going to come to you with a formal recommendation, a formal request, to take that plan request along with three others and defer them to the fall. And one of the reasons is, is that we think the, the traffic concerns along 100th are significant enough that we're hearing that we need to, we need to study that outside of the 2015 periodic planning code update timeline. Otherwise, I don't think we'll get adopted. So I just wanted to add that, since we're on camera and people may be listening, that you'll hear that formal request next Wednesday. And that is one of the reasons for, for asking you to defer that particular request at this time.
Correct. Thank you. Regarding that intersection, so you said that failing level of service would be F. Is that correct?
Well, it's a, failing is a terminology...
Well, so I guess unacceptable, or I guess...
We, level of service F is just the highest grade that is assigned to extreme congestive conditions.
But is it, but there's some, I understood there's some level that becomes unacceptable where there's got to be some sort of, where maybe you couldn't do a, a development project or something like that adjacent to it without, without taking action. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what our, our city's approval guidelines necessarily are. There are, you know, it's, it's based on concurrency is the corridor level of service. And that's, that's what gets reviewed in terms of projects and development approval. It's not just one single location. I know in the past, when I worked as a consultant, there, that, that intersection particularly, for example, was, the accepted level of service at that time was D. And, you know, once it, once, once the city grew and we were submitting projects to, for review, that it, it got accepted as level of service E. It was just, it was just raised so that development could continue to occur.
Okay.
And, and be acceptable. So our, our current standard is, is corridor-based, and, and from our analysis right now with, under existing and even future conditions, we will continue to meet that level of service E concurrency condition.
Okay.
With buildup even.
Okay. So I noticed that on, right now, you've got the north end of that is, at that intersection is level of service C, and then this, 145th, it's level of service D. Is that the right way to say that?
For, you're talking about 100th corridor?
Yeah. And then you show in 2035, which is 20 years from now, that it will, the level of service will be at C, and at, at 522 and E at 145th. Does that number take into account the expected growth? The 2035 number take into account what you expect in terms of growth along that corridor as well?
It's based on, as far as I understand, and maybe Don, he's modeled the traffic, but it's based on what the zoning is currently along that corridor.
Assuming that that'll develop at some, a build-out, or? I guess what I'm asking is it, does it account for population growth and the fact that traffic's going to be added to that intersection?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So I guess, I'm, I, I live kind of near that neighborhood, and I drive through there quite a bit. And frankly, I, I listen to the testimony of the people that were here, and I understand their concern, but, and there's also a construction project going on along there right now that backs up traffic from time to time. But I, I'm not convinced that there's a traffic issue as bad as it seems to be being made out to be. I've driven, I drive through there probably four or five times a week, and most often between the hours of five and six, because I'm taking my daughter to basketball practice. And I've, I've really never experienced a delay through there, so I'm not sure. Except for a couple of times, a delay relative to the project, because they're directing traffic, they have a traffic control plan in place. I'm speaking of Piper's Glen.
Ah, okay.
I haven't seen a problem. I see problems in the, I can see it in the morning going south, but I think that we've got to base whatever direction we provide on solid information that, that is, I think, proven. Not, there's, everybody has an opinion about traffic, and some people's opinion of bad traffic is different than others. But I really think we need to base it on, on, on the facts as far as, as far as we can obtain those. And I think that goes back to, to you guys with traffic studies and that kind of thing. And I'm seeing here that, you know, again, the traffic, the existing level of service at those intersections being, it seems to me well within the acceptable range. I, I think you guys need to focus where the real problems are, and it seems to me that you're doing that. I see a lot of level F in here, and it seems to be that those are the top priority projects. So I, I kind of concur with what you're, what you're saying as far as those are concerned. You mentioned the priority number two project was, I didn't quite get the numbers, but at 35th and 39th, is that the corridor along 228th?
The, and, and there's no particular order, one, two, or three?
Sorry, let me clarify. The priority two, you said, was, Blake, Commissioner Stebbin asked you of the top three, you said that was the second one. That's what I'm referring to.
Okay, so that project, the 39th connector was a, a project that connected 120th at 240th through, let me see if I can find the, it's this way. Essentially, this will be a good graphic. It essentially connected here north through undeveloped, through property here to, to make that 120th and 39th a straight shot project. And that was developed, you know, a decade ago and thought of. However, the funding, the ARTID funding that was set, that was identified to fund that didn't come, and, and up to this point, there's still, there's, the cost of that project was, was something that the city felt we, we wouldn't pursue, and therefore it was, it was removed from our, our project list. However, that, that doesn't mean that that traffic is not going to continue to grow, you know, from this interchange, essentially, that will continue north along 39th. So in, in lieu of that project going forward, we would need to make improvements along, between 240th through 35th, which is the parallel route to the west, to 28th, and then they would have to take a, and they'd have to take a, a turn here to get back to 39th.
Okay.
And that's the project that was my second.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking.
And if I could clarify, Public Works does not prioritize the transportation projects. We don't have a number one, and number two, and number three. There's a capital facility plan process that we, we have a committee made of a planning commission members, park board members, council members, staff, city manager, that prioritizes projects as a whole. And as you well know, transportation projects or road projects are not necessarily just driven by specific need. I mean, there's a whole complicated decision process involved. There's a number of cars, there's a number of people affected, there's, does it help economic sustainability? There, there's a lot of decision-making in that process. So I think Sherman's probably giving you his opinion of what he feels some of the more important transportation, quote, "transportation" projects are. But that's not necessarily a priority from the city point of view, I think.
Okay. And then two last questions. One is, the areas that are within the planning boundaries but outside of the city limits, what is the city of Bothell's responsibility for those roadways, those arterials and intersections? Are we required to track those and make, make changes as necessary?
So right now, I think Don can help me as well. Don just happens to also work for the Snohomish County... Don just happens to also work for the Snohomish County side, so he could give us his point of view. But my belief is, we are supposed to include them in the planning area. We track them as well, but it's really the Snohomish County at this point who are responsible for them.
Okay.
I believe they have a similar method for developers. When developers come in, they collect fees and they apply them in certain districts. And this southwest Snohomish County district is one area where they would apply those fees.
Okay. And then just on a slightly different note, I saw mentioned in here that you guys had incorporated the newly annexed areas in the King County side, the southern part of the city into this plan. What sort of analysis was done on those particular roadways to determine whether or not there were kind of high priority changes that need to be made on the properties that were previously owned by the, you know, that were previously within the King County's jurisdiction?
The annexation of the King County areas between, that were, between us and Kirkland were built into the model and the land use and same, similar, very similar to the rest of the city. And Don can attach, tell us a little bit more about that if you need it, but it's essentially all of those properties and those zones were incorporated into our model and run with, and run with the, again, the same build-out scenarios.
I'm not necessarily thinking just about traffic, but as far as road maintenance and that kind of thing. You guys have a plan for repaving and that sort of thing over every 25 years. Did those get kind of incorporated in and put in a line of priority?
So we have two levels of maintenance. We have our own crews who do minor maintenance and I would have to check with our supervisor, Nick, on where he is with that. I believe he's ahead of our Capitol Division. He's gone out there and looked at the, kind of the condition, the near term and whether there's potholes and that sort of thing. We have a pavement program that we assess the city streets every year, but every other year, we do each county. So we do King County in one year, we do Snow County the other year, King County, go back and forth. At the time of annexation, in order for us to do some of that assessment, we needed some GIS information, street, things that we need to go out there and actually rate the street. And unfortunately, we were not able to do it. So the next time we do King County, we will incorporate the annexation area. Our goal, and if you guys happen to be at that council retreat or listen to it or whatever, there will be a pavement discussion that we will have. And part of the discussion there is the recommendation that this year, we're going to spend a lot of staff time to kind of come up with a robust program and come back and make some recommendations. So we hope to include that annexation area.
Thank you. Do we have any other high-level questions from Commission? Yes.
Thanks for the presentation, Sherman. One general question, and I don't know if you've got a solid answer for this one or if we do more on the finance side, but you've got a 25% shortfall, looks like approximately tons over the next 15 years for transportation projects. On the positive side, we've made 75% of the headway. Does that seem about right for a planning cycle of this duration? I'm sorry, can you?
Sure. So the $143 million shortfall over the next 15 years, does that seem in line with planning cycles of that duration?
Have Steve answer that one.
You know, that's a great question and we're not sure. We know that the last time around, six years ago, the actual number was smaller, but proportionally it's probably not that far off. We have a bigger program now than we had six years ago, which amazingly it grew. We're not sure, but we do know what it means is we need to find sources of funds and there's many different sources we would be looking to promote. There's revenue generating sources like transportation benefit districts, adjacent cities like Kenmore for paving maintenance, for example. They've passed things like that, that's either adding to car tab taxes or something else. You know, the region has not had region street, region-wide street voters package since 2007 when the last one was voted down. And as an example, that Bothell Connector project was on that list and that, at that time, we felt that the money we would have gotten from that would probably have completed that project. And I know that there are other agencies promoting a regional package of that sort and that's the kind of thing that we as a city can portion support for those things. Those are sources of funding. I'd like to also point out that that's not just a project shortage. That's including street maintenance, that's bikes. So, you know, we have a list of sidewalks we want, so that all comes into that cost. So, you know, whether we're going to make up that shortage or not, it could be a combination of getting new revenue or finding sources of funding, but it also may be a practical, we may not get all the sidewalks and bike lanes and things that the city wishes to see. So it's a great question. I'm not sure. We'd have to look at that to see where other agencies are and everything, but I think that's just kind of where we are based on the plan right now.
Okay, thanks. Another question, I had the same sort of initial impact when reading through the packet that Commissioner Stedman had as far as, I don't want to speak for you, but if this was your point earlier, there's a lot of issues to maintain our level of service and over the next 25 years, we're going to decrease slightly across the board, which is anticipated due to growth, which we want as a city. There's no silver bullet, like you guys mentioned earlier, no light rails coming to Bothell. The projects that are, the concurrency projects are there to barely maintain level of service or sort of bridge the gap. Are we going to be relying more on mass transportation as far as helping offset some of the growth? I mean, looking at the numbers, it looked like there was approximately 33% increase in trips on the major corridors from the study that you put together. And if we're not significantly improving what we have now, it seems like, you know, that could be an important conversation in the future.
That's a good question. There's, you know, to make those quantum leaps in reducing trips or improving capacity, there's, you know, it does take people to get out of single occupancy vehicles and additional transit service or, you know, some of the things that we've incorporated here in transportation demand management, CTR guidelines that are required by the state. Those are like employee, employer-driven type of, you know, incentives. Those are what you're going to see more and more of to help, in my opinion, to help, you know, improve those conditions so that we're just not going down that path of, you know, is it a band-aid to fix this or that? And I think that's the direction in terms of, you know, in transit, you know, the plans for high-capacity transit, for example, as long as it's a reliable source of transportation for somebody to get from one point to another, that's the direction we're going with our high-capacity transit plans, with SWIFT plans, those, that's, those are where you're going to see the trend, I believe.
Good evening. I'm Don Samdahl with Farron Peers, where the transportation consultant assists at the city. I just wanted to take the opportunity, you know, you asked what, you know, some of the main issues were, and I think one thing to keep in mind is the coordination with other agencies, notably with the state on their improvements to I-405 and as Sherman mentioned on with sound transit as they go ahead with their ST3 package, including potentially expanding bus rapid transit on I-405. The state's already planning to implement the express toll lanes. These are things that hopefully will make those arteries flow better and people stay on 405 rather than cutting through the streets of Bothell. So, I mean, and in fact, those are very expensive projects and so I think, you know, making sure that Bothell is a player with these regional programs is going to be very important to help get your programs implemented.
Thanks. One last question. Not directly related to transportation, but a lot of times in the Commission over the last couple of months, we've been talking about making Bothell a viable place to live and work. And as Mr. Langston brought up earlier, there's some fees associated with doing business in Bothell that, you know, have to be offset. My question is, there's a mention about 60% pass-through traffic that doesn't stop in Bothell. Is that high for the area or due to Canyon Park and due to the employment centers we have, is that on par for?
I'm going to let Don answer that because of this model.
Yeah, we do a lot of work for other jurisdictions. I guess it is a fairly high percentage. You happen to be right at the confluence of a lot of major through roads. Not to say that, I mean, trips that are generated within Bothell obviously use the facilities, but especially on, most of the problems north on 527 through Canyon Park, you know, partly it's due to the, you know, the traffic from the business park, but it's an awful lot that's kind of through traffic. The same thing on 522. So I'd say, you know, it is a relatively high percentage of through traffic.
Thanks.
Any other general questions and comments from the Commission? David?
Yeah, hey Sherman, thanks again for your presentation. Really appreciated it. I guess my first question is definitely not a very big solution towards the huge transportation issue we're facing in the city and other cities are facing, but I don't know if I saw a mention of it in here, I might have missed it if there was, I apologize, but for a car sharing component, I know there's a van pool, but with companies like Zipcar or Car2Go, possible parking spaces in the city, maybe, you know, I don't know where the best places would be. I would think parking spot down on Main Street or something. I'm talking about maybe one or two cars, you know, just to kind of, for the city to try out or allow those companies to try. I don't, you know, that basically enables people to, you know, use a car once in a while who don't want to necessarily own one. And the second part, I guess on that is, I'm not very familiar with many charging stations for electrical cars and maybe that's something will be part of the, you know, new City Hall parking structure and some of the new structures that are going in, but I was wanting if you could comment on those couple of things, car sharing and charging stations.
My knowledge, I'll start with that, that I know that there are, there are plans for charging stations, you know, in the new, in the new City Hall plans is my understanding of that. New development as a condition is not a requirement right now for our developers or new development to put that in, but that's something that we can definitely consider more of possibly. Same with the car sharing plans that you're mentioning, that's just a, if that, if that operation were to show more of an interest to develop here and add in here, we would just, we could definitely relook at parking plans that we have now. We are, you know, since this last update in the last five years, we've increased, you know, parking downtown and generally, there's, there is, there is good parking downtown, but we've, we've made headways by just, you know, delineating it and coming up with a program to, you know, add more spaces and identify those so that, you know, and I think the wayfinding signs, that wayfinding signs coming up, plans for that will also add to, aid in looking for spaces like that. But, you know, specifically for car sharing, I have not heard, you know, a lot from any agencies that, or companies that wanted to add that here, although we would just have to look at, you know, where we would want to concentrate that or, you know, revise some parking spaces downtown to accommodate that. That would be a, that would definitely be a positive thing to continue to look at.
Okay. All right, thanks, Sherman. And lastly, my last comment would be your question. So on those TR-52 you handed out with regards to greenhouse gas emissions and air pollutants, I mean, it's kind of a, it's a tough goal. It seems like it's a goal that all cities, states, countries want to meet, but it seems to be one that's kind of just kind of passed off and just kind of said. And so, is there any specifics on how the city might try to achieve that goal? Is that with regards to transportation?
Well, I think our plans to improve, I think our plans to improve, you know, non-motorized connections, connectivity, continue, continue the development goals of having mixed-use development where the regional centers accommodate, accommodate residential and, you know, commercial uses, those, all those things, as well as supporting transit, supporting transit plans, all of those things compute, you know, combined to, to help reduce those greenhouse emissions and those are the, those are the plans and policies that we have in place to meet that.
I would go even further is, you know, PSRC is a very real thing. We get, the PSRC administers the federal grant funding program. So when we work on 522 and we're trying to install business access transit lanes, a lot of it, you look at the application, we have to compete for funds. And business, bat lanes are seen as providing transit and the more riders you get, you can actually have a formula that shows you reduce trips and if you reduce trips, this is your CO2 goes down. So we actually do calculations like that in our applications and you're judged on that and that's how you can compete for funds as well. So it's very important for us to have certain components like this, for us to shoot as goals, not just because it's the right thing to do and it's good for the environment, but also because this is, this is what is being promoted now and we want to do our part and we want to create a regional corridor on 522 because we do have a lot of pass-through traffic and if we get more people on the transit buses. Or, you know, bat lanes even have more use than just the transit. I mean, people pull off and slow down into there to get into businesses and if they're not, if that bat lane's not there, then they're slowing down in the general purpose lane and you have to slow down behind them and there's a wave that gets created. So WashDOT recognizes that business and access in transit lanes are not just good for transit, it actually gets the general purpose traffic moving along. So there's a lot of these little components that might not seem very important or huge all by themselves, but you'd be amazed that if you add up the transit, you add up good roads that aren't bumpy and you don't, you get intersections that not, don't have congestion. All this adds up to less waiting time for cars, less emissions, less greenhouse gases. So all these little pieces kind of have a purpose and they're kind of put together.
All right, great. Thanks for those, thanks for the explanations, those are great. Thanks.
There's also, which neither of us mentioned previously was, you know, efforts and plans for, you know, as technology continues, the call intelligent transportation systems, ITS, and those come, those just come in the form of improved signalization software and hardware and information, you know, information signs that could help people to travel fast, travel smarter and, you know, that's just another component as well that we didn't even mention.
Okay, so what we can do now, I want to make sure that we've given you, that we get you enough feedback and direction for the next iteration here. So we've had a lot of high-level comments, but at this point, what I'd like to do is just walk through the pages, just, we'll just count, starting at one, and then if you have, if you want to comment on something specifically on that page, just bring it up. So we'll start with TR-1.
Okay.
TR-2. TR-3. TR-4. TR-5. TR-6. TR-7. TR-8. TR-9. TR-10. TR-11. TR-12. TR-13. TR-14. TR-19. TR-21. TR-22. TR-23. TR-25. TR-26. TR-27. TR-28. TR-29. TR-30. TR-31. TR-32. TR-33. TR-34. TR-35. TR-38. TR-39. TR-40. TR-41. TR-42. TR-43.
I, I had one question on this one. In the middle of the page, it said, in that, let's see if I can see it up there, the, the paragraph here, "The city's bicycle priority network to help define the bicycle facility needs." And I just wasn't clear what that phrase "priority network" meant. Is that, is that a proper noun? Is that, does that mean something specific in this context?
The city...
It's, it's in the middle of the page, on that paragraph, right under "Bicycle Level of Service."
Okay, very first, okay. Measure the city's bicycle priority. So the bicycle priority network mean, is, the priority network is just, is, is, we're just, we're just talking about where, where our improvements are going to be there. So the priority network, I, nothing, where we are in terms of our, our key, our key bicycle corridors, I guess if you want to call it that, is, is really what I'm, what we're trying to say here. So to, to define the, the facility needs, we're going to define where those key projects are, where the, the priority network being, this is our, this is our, our, the major connectors in terms of the bicycle network, and how we determine where those improvements should be.
Excuse me, the, it actually refers to the, the streets that are shown in figure TR-7, which, so basically, all of the roads that are shown with some kind of bicycle treatment are considered bicycle priority streets, so.
Okay. Could we include a mention of that figure then in the, in the text?
I believe it's referred to in the, under the, in the table TR-11, but we should mention it up in the text. That would be a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
TR-45.
On the table, on TR-46, page TR-46, table TR-13, I'm, I'm coming up with some different numbers on that, so just double-check your, your math on that. It could be rounding errors, I'm not sure, but as I, as I add the totals, you know, across on the horizontal, I come up with $461.42 million instead of $469, so...
Yeah, that's a rounding.
Yeah, okay, okay.
TR-47.
You'll probably get that same thing here, Blake.
And I, I had a few questions on this one. So for one of these, I, I think this comment's come up in some of our prior discussions, and I just wanted to call it out here too. But for TRG-4, so when we talk about a goal to reduce single occupant vehicles, I, can we clarify what we're trying, what that's about? Is this about reducing congestion? Is this about reducing greenhouse gases? Is this, I'm, for example, if, if we reduce single occupant vehicles by encouraging everybody to ride with a buddy and take a kid to work, I mean, technically that would satisfy this goal, but that probably may not satisfy what we're really trying to accomplish?
I think it just, it is a general, a general goal that, that would accomplish a variety of those things. If there's a specific, if you think we should add something more to, to specify one direction of that versus another, then is that something you want to, you're talking about, Mike?
Yeah.
In other words, I, I think, you know, this goal, the, the goal of reducing SOVs will, you know, accomplishes all of the, like you said, right? It, it does help congestion, it does also, you know, to, 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 to enhance environmental sustainability, the, all, you know, it's a, it's a, it is a generalized goal, and that was part of one of the, you know, to consolidate these goals initially was, again, if that's a good goal and accomplishes a, a number of more specific goals, whether it's to reduce congestion or to, you know, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, I think that was the, the purpose of trying to consolidate them. But if you think there's something specific more that, maybe I'm, I'm not understanding what your, your comment is.
If I may, from my perspective, I, I think I like it being a broad goal, it just, it happens to have a, a number of different benefits within, within that one goal. So I'm okay leaving that as a goal.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, my, my concern is just that we may, there may be ways that technically satisfy that goal, but kind of backfire and don't actually do what we want to do. It's kind of like the 520 Bridge. You know, how many of us have had people, we got across the 520 Bridge at rush hour, and so we go wrangle up some friends to carpool with us, just so that we can take the carpooling? And so I'm, I'm just aware of that, that potential to backfire, so I like to be really clear about the goals, but that, that's fine. Do, do we have a way of measuring the single occupant vehicles as opposed to a carpool vehicle? How, how do we know if we're accomplishing this goal?
Don, you have a...
Well, through the city's count program, you can, you can certainly do that. There's other regional counting programs that, that do that, looking at some of the major facilities. So that, I mean, that could be considered as something, I mean, there's not a specific target goal, I mean, in terms of reducing the single occupant vehicle trips by X percent, but, I mean, you could start a measuring program and figure out where you are now and then look at where you are in five years.
But can, can we tell if a car is a single occupancy vehicle versus a carpool?
Yes, through, at this point, through observation, and there's some other more electronic techniques that are being developed.
Okay, thanks.
I think, Mike, I think the, the reason that we mention it this way in terms of single occupancy vehicles is because, because that is the, that is the base of how, how we achieve, you know, it's, that's, that's how we achieve those congestion goals, to meet, to minimize congestion and, and, you know, reduce, reduce emissions or, or, or any of these things. This is the, from a transportation standpoint anyways, these, by reducing single occupancy vehicles, that is the sole, that is the, the primary, you know, generator of these issues. And by singling it out, that it is a single occupancy vehicle, that that's the target that we need to reduce, we are in turn improving everything else. You see what I mean? As opposed to just...
That makes sense.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
You know, water quality, air quality, everything improves by reducing single occupancy vehicles. So by identifying that as the goal, and how, how you do that, well, you know, TDM measures, seat, you know, transportation demand management, improvement, improving transit ridership, coordinating development with, you know, residential use and mixed use, that, those, those things are, are how you reduce single occupancy vehicles, and I think that's the goal.
Okay, thank you.
TR-49.
Again, just to clarify, on TR-51, Sherman, you're changing 20-year to 25-year for the resurfacing of the roads, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Let me explain that one a little bit. So 25 years is, if you do adequate maintenance on your roadways and you do an overlay, two-inch overgrind and overlay, 25 years is now about the lifetime of that roadway, so we're changing that number.
I, one comment for TRP-3. It seemed very related to TRP-9, and I'm wondering if those goals could be merged. I mean, they're, they're both stating that new development should mitigate traffic impacts to the transportation system. P-3 is a little specific that it calls out some of the major roads, but they, they seem related.
We could look at combining those. I think differentiation is P-3 specifically talks about state highways and state standards, and P-9 relates more broadly to the city's mitigation, but actually, it might make sense to start with P-9 and then add in that you also have to meet the state requirements, so we could, might make sense to blend those.
I, I had another question about P-9. When we said new development shall also pay its fair share towards transportation, this, this makes me think, you know, back to Mr. Langston's testimony. How, I, I mean, that, that's a case where it seems like someone's been forced to pay... Well, I don't know how, how we would compute fair share in that case, but it didn't seem incredibly fair. How, how do we compute fair share in a case like this with P-9?
Well, I'll let...
I can't speak specifically to Mr. Langston's development, but the city, as far as I know, has two main things. One is the, what this P-9 addresses is cumulative traffic impacts, which is basically the city's transportation impact fee program, the development fair share of the city, citywide programs. The city also requires frontage improvements on, in front of the development, you know, if, if that portion of the road is undeveloped, which could include things like sidewalks and, and curb and gutter and so forth. So they, those are the two main items, and where they overlap is where you get into this issue of credits, where they don't overlap, there may be two different requirements. But again, I, that's, I can't speak specifically to his situation, but that's my understanding of how the city does mitigation.
Yeah, I think, I mean, my preference on something like PR-9 would be, I, I'm always wary of ambiguous language, just because it can cause unintended consequences. You know, I'd love to hear from the rest of the commission's opinions on this, but I, I prefer to avoid ambiguous terms like, like fair share and replace it with something more specific. I mean, you, you provided some good examples of what, what that might mean.
So if I could clarify, when you say specific, you want to give a number?
Not necessarily a number, just, just something a, a little more, just, just less ambiguous.
Hold on, are you having a problem with fair? Fair is a, fair is a recognized term for, on impact fees.
Does that have a technical meaning to it? Should that be a capital F?
It's a reckon, I don't know, I'm not, I don't know the details, but that's a recognized term for, for impact fees, be it school, be it, be it any kind of parks fees, it's, it's the fair share, so. But that's just the vernacular that's been used, so I don't know how, as far as the, when you get into the specifics of it, but that's how it's used.
I, my, my understanding is that, is that, and maybe you guys can correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but impact fees are developed that you pay on some per unit or per occupant or whatever the case may be basis, and that those, so that your fair share is just your, whatever that, your, your portion that you're adding to the system is. And so I think, I actually don't think fair share really is ambiguous, I think it's fairly well defined in the city, and maybe that just needs to be maybe explained in here a little bit about how that is derived.
Well, perhaps, I was suggesting to Sherman that a reference here could be made to the city's transportation impact fee program or the code citation, so it's clear that that's where this would go, but...
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be a good improvement.
We could work on some wording here that makes it a little more specific.
Yeah, that, that would be great. I'm, I'm just thinking about the testimony we had earlier. I mean, I'm sure somebody thought that what, what Mr. Langston's gone through was in some way a fair share, but it didn't, I, I would struggle to interpret that as fair, and so I'm just, I'd like, I'd like to avoid that ambiguity, so that citation would be perfect. But, thank you.
TR-52. Again, on this one, P-14 and P's, P-14 and P-16, I thought there was some overlap here, but maybe I'm reading my notes wrong.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, 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 so both, both P-14 and B, P-16 are talking about restricting through traffic? Is there, can those be merged?
Yeah, those look like they, they could be. The, the language of P-14, we wanted to just, you know, was to change, not, not necessarily to change the, the, the concern here is, the concern is here is what we're trying to avoid is development that, that we had experience with where it just didn't make sense to, to, just because that you couldn't have a through street that connected two developments, because they're in the same, essentially, the same neighborhood, and it's not, but, but the way was, the way the policy was written, you couldn't connect these two adjoining, adjacent developments. And the only, and it resulted in a, in a back-to-back cul-de-sac scenario where essentially that traffic, if, if it were, if it were one big development, it would have had a connecting street in it. What, what the intent of, of reducing cut-through traffic is, is from, is from traffic from outside of the greater neighborhood coming through, and by, by, you know, by improving streets that make it look like it's, this is the arterial, and the arterial turns through my neighborhood, and that's what we're trying to change the language to say in at least P-14. And that's what essentially P-16 is kind of saying too, so, you know, so I think, you know, you're, I understand what you're, you're, you know, the same meaning, but I just wanted to clarify what, what we're trying to do with P-14, and, and how we discussed that cut-through traffic doesn't mean just because there's a development that's adjacent to you is, is cutting through your neighborhood, it's, it's the same neighborhood, it's just that they're two different developments.
The only distinction, P-14 refers to new roadways, and P-16 talks about if you're making some changes to existing roadways to do it in a way that discourages. So again, I think they could be merged and just make sure that's the distinction between the two.
Thanks. Thanks. TR 54? TR 55? TR 56? TR 57? One comment I have, the numbering for TRP 26, it looks like back on TR 55, we added P26 and 27, so on TR 57, should P26 be P28?
The, sorry, that, again, that's, this numbering is going to have to come at the end, and it's just the policy, the specific policy numbers, specific action numbers, they're all in order, starting from the very beginning of the goals and policies, so these are going to change. I, in fact, you'll see in some of the notation of the policy and actions, that I might have just numbered it 60X, or something, just because I knew it would be a continuation, but I, it was, it's the location of where we want to add, or due to the deletion of these policies and actions, in addition to, you know, or adding new ones, that at the end of the day, the formatting will be continuous, so there'll be no repetitive, there won't be any repetitive policy-action numbers.
Okay, at least I'm interpreting it properly, then.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. TR 57?
Oh, yeah, just real quick. So, I don't know, I don't, I don't usually want to make documents even longer, but as I was mentioning earlier, I don't know if it's possible, or even necessary, to put car sharing in with under TRA 47. I don't know if that makes sense, or do you think that additionally?
I think that's a good idea, Dave.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. TR 57? TR 58? TR 59? TR 60? TR 61? And then, any comments on the maps? Okay.
Did you say you had a comment on 61?
No, I was just asking if anyone on the commission had comments for the maps, which looks like there is none. Okay, great. So, I guess, in getting back to the, can you bring back the original slide you had about, just procedurally, the steps that we were going through?
Sure.
So, I think we've provided some direction back. So, at this point, then, sounds like procedurally, we should continue this, we've given you the direction to act on, and then continue the hearing to February 25th.
Is that, Gary, is that the date? Confirm that?
If you could continue the 2015 periodic planning code update to February 4th, and the transportation element to February 25th, that would be very specific.
Okay. Can you say that one more time?
Yes, if you could continue the 2015 periodic planning code update to February 4th, and the transportation element of that to February 25th.
All right, I entertain him. Oh, yes.
Just one quick question. We only have a few small changes. On the 25th, what would be the goal of that meeting? Could we, you know, approve the document that we have in front of us with the minor changes, and have the chair sign off at that at some other time, or do we need to meet?
You could certainly do that. We had anticipated that perhaps you might need one more meeting on this topic. We'd originally scheduled the 18th of February. We've got some staffing issues on the 18th, so our automatic fallback was to bring it back on the 25th. If you feel comfortable with staff making the changes that you've directed tonight, and then bringing you back your preliminary approval FYI copy that we've been doing with the subarea plans and so forth, we'd be happy to do that, and that'll save us having to put an additional item on the 25th, which would be great.
I'd be comfortable with that.
So, in that case, you would just need to make a motion to continue the periodic planning code update to February 4th.
Well, do we need to make a motion about the transportation element to?
You can include that in your motion. I don't think you need to, because we've received direction from you. At this point, we're just continuing the public hearing, so I think we just need the motion for the 4th.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we continue the 2015 periodic plan and code update to February 4th.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Let it show, be shown the motion passed unanimously. All right. Thank you, Sherman, for walking us through that, and yielding all these questions, and to you as well, Don, and Steve.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
All right, so moving down the agenda, then. Study session, I believe there is none. Any old business? I think none. Reports from staff?
I'll be very brief. In your packet this week, I will provide a calendar for you that shows the rest of your schedule for the plan update. You'll notice when you get that, that we have you scheduled to meet three weeks in February. Then, the first week in March, you'll be, I think, your last subarea plan or element-specific meeting.
How did I say four weeks in February?
There is, but we're not going to do transportation on the 18th now, so we'll take that date off. You'll have an open date, unless we need it. And then, beginning March 11th, we'll start bringing you what we call the integrated review, which essentially is everything consolidated that you've seen to date. And we're thinking that you'll have, you'll have up to three weeks to go through that integrated review. It may not take you that long, because you've seen everything once, but we're trying to provide you three weeks' inadequate time to do that. When you get the schedule from me, you'll see that beginning in April, and May, and June, and July, sorry, April, May, and June, because I'm doing the schedule out to June 30th adoption date, you'll see that in April, May, and June, your schedule is blank. That's not because you won't be doing anything, that's because I'm just trying to project out the periodic planning code update, and starting in April, it'll go to council. We're taking the docket of planning code amendments for the next year to council on March 3rd, so that will generate items for you for working on in April, May, and June, and so on, in the future. So, we'll start to fill that out. I just didn't want you to think when you get the schedule in your packet this week, that you have April, May, June, and July off.
Can you provide some context on how we are through the whole process? It's easy to kind of insight of the whole timeline.
It is, and that's why I...
Because we're speaking up fast, and we've had a lot of pieces.
Yeah, that's why I'm going to provide you the schedule in your packet this week, but I think we're on track, as long as we don't get off-track. And that's the whole reason that we're going to bring your recommendation next Wednesday, to defer, not here, but just defer temporarily for these property-specific amendments. The reason for that is, we've talked about them a little bit, I don't want to get into the details, because then we'll be discussing the projects themselves, but they're either of a complexity, or a scale, or a scope, or controversial in nature, that I think, or a combination of those factors, that any one or all four of those factors would simply derail the whole timeline for the entire plan update. And we need to give council time to hold their public hearings. We need to do SEPA review from the staff level, and issue SEPA, and have time for appeal period on that. So, we really need to get you through the process by the end of March, and that's the reason we'll be bringing those projects to you, and asking you to defer those.
Gary, you mentioned March 23rd as the new docket, is that?
March 3rd.
Excuse me, March 3rd?
Yes.
Is that where you would expect these proposals, these citizen proposals, would those be included on that docket, then?
I'll put those on the docket, and our recommendation to council will be to start work on those this year. Our feeling is, and I think, I think commission agrees, that since those requests came in as part of this plan update, we should tackle those as soon as we can. And that's why I say we're asking you to temporarily defer them, and not forget about them for a long time. But I will put those in the docket, and council will have the opportunity to hear those, and they could prioritize them differently, but I think our recommendation will be to at least start work on those this year.
And there will be an opportunity to discuss kind of where we are with each one of those that you're going to ask for deferral on, at that February 3rd meeting?
Yes. We'll give you a little bit of background and analysis on each. We're working on that right now for the packet. But that's going to be fairly simple. You know, you've heard, you've at least seen the request, and you know what they're about. So, I think we all know what the challenges are with each of those requests. I think in an ideal world, if we had another two, or three, or four months for this process, we could do them. But there are some, potentially, some very real consequences for not meeting the June 30th adoption date, including grant funding to the city, that we really don't want to jeopardize. So, we, the state says we should be done by June 30th, we really, I think we really need to shoot for that.
Okay, thank, thank you.
You're welcome. That's it.
Reports from members? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.